I'd like to call tonight's Abington zoning board of appeals meeting to order. We have several items on our agenda and a few old and new business items to address. So we'll start with approval of minutes from June 13th and July 11th of this year, 2024. Any discussion about the minutes?
Yeah, sure. You don't look at it.
I think would it just be the three of us voting on this, right?
That's correct.
All in favor of approving the minutes for June 13th, 2024?
Do we need a motion to approve?
Uh, do we?
We need a motion.
Oh yeah, we need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes of June 13th to 2024?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Entertain a motion for the July 11th, 2024 minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes from July 11th?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, before we get into the real business of the night, we did get some correspondence from the town's law firm or legal representatives. And this has to do with some legislation, I believe, that is an act that will change how in-law apartments are dealt with across the state. Does anyone speak on like the timing when this will be implemented?
Yes.
February 2nd.
February 2nd?
180 days from when Governor Healy passed.
Okay. This will profoundly change at least one aspect of what the zoning board does.
Correct.
They will allow non-relatives to live in accessory dwelling units, small, you know, separate buildings. Right now, they only allow people who are relatives to do that. And they have to file an affidavit every year that they are still related to that person or persons who live there. But the state government wants to, is going to open it up to anyone that can, you know, as I expect we're going to get a lot of accessory dwelling unit requests after that.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, do we know there's a grandfather clause on this, that everyone who's been very far under the old in-law addition will still have to maintain that process, although it may reapply and go for eight years?
Well, at this point in time, we don't have anything.
From anyone saying that?
Yeah, coming at a warrant of any sort, saying that the zoning bylaw 17532a is going to be demolished or demolished, right, correct.
So should we just wait until?
So for now, the building department is just acting on if anyone comes to ask for assistance in applying for in-law, an accessory apartment, I continue onward with them and ask them, when do they think they're planning on doing it? And then they say, probably in the spring. And I said, well, then I would suggest you check back again, one more time beforehand.
Anyone between now and February 2nd gets an approval for an in-law, we follow the current rules though, until something changes?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah, correct.
And you have to meet the same guidelines?
Correct.
Okay.
Can we offer to give copies of this document from KP Law to anybody who comes in and inquires about?
We can. They're also on the state website, if they just even type up a Forte Home Act, it's gonna, you know, it will come up.
Okay.
And a lot of people have heard about it, but they're just not interpreting it properly, thinking that once Governor Healy passed it, it's automatic. And I'm like, it's not, it's six months from the time of action.
It's gonna give us time to make it approved.
Can we say that this affects both attached and independent dwellings?
Yes, it's, yes.
And that anyone who does a quick claim deed on another piece of property to extend the property itself, the combination of those two properties become one going forward, based on what I read?
It could be, because if they're lots next to each other, and they can be combined as one, since the, since the property owner is the same person, it has to be the same person. One can't be in a trust and one can't be, you know, you know, a private, it has to be the same, same ownership.
So is it possible that non-conforming lot can become a conforming lot if a quick claim deed is done to an associated or budding piece of property and it's all put under the same name?
That is possible, everything's possible. I think that sounds actually really accurate, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion about this?
No, I think we just hold on till all the information is out there and?
As I receive information, I will forward it to the board.
As you always do.
Because I know this is an important issue.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a little kiosk area downstairs for them.
Okay, that'd be important enough.
Okay, moving on. We'd like to hear the petition of Michael Ahern, is that right? For a variance under section 175-21a.2, as stated in the application, the petitioner is proposing to convert a seven-bedroom, single-family home to a proposed two-family home. The property is located at 466 Plymouth Street, on Assessor's Map 40, Lot 59, in the residential R30 zone. Is there anyone here representing that project? We'd like to hear more about it. Come up to the, are you speaking on this one?
No, I don't know where Mr. Ahern is.
There's no one here to speak for the petition of Michael Ahern? I guess we're gonna have to, well, what do you guys think? I don't think we can really act on this, though. More about it. Are you here representing Mr. Ahern?
I am.
Excellent, your timing is perfect.
Just in time.
Like to hear more about your proposed project? Tell us your name and address.
Yes, Michael Ahern, 190 Willis Street, Quincy, Massachusetts. Good evening. Good evening, how are you?
What would you like to do?
So we have a seven-bedroom, single-family on the corner of Plymouth Street in center, central, and we want to try and convert that to two, two-bedroom apartments.
Will the outside appearance of the building change, or will it be only inside?
No, it's all interior work. Window locations, everything stays, there's already two staircases from the second floor that are private.
Okay.
And so everything would stay the same as far as doors, windows, egresses, everything stays exactly the same.
Okay, bathrooms?
Bathrooms would actually go down in count, right now there's four and a half, I think, in the house. So it'd be two, no, it's gonna be the same, still be four and a half.
Four and a half?
Yeah.
Will one have, one have two and a half, and one have two?
There's an existing foyer that has a half bathroom in it, when you come out, come into the back door. And we're gonna leave that half bathroom there, just convenience.
And that, would that be attached to a specific unit?
That goes to unit one.
Okay.
They're both floor through, they're not by level, so one is floor one and one is floor two.
Okay, and accessibility to both doors, both sides, in front door?
Both units would have accessibility to, each one would have a private side door, and then they both would share the front door from a lobby.
Okay, common lobby?
Common lobby in the front only.
Okay. All right, all right, there we go. I was just gonna see if you could do that. Thank you. Parking's not an issue, right? Because you are the one also doing the garages.
Yeah, we have 15 parking spaces, I believe.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Ahern? Any more questions?
So both films are staying still?
Both films stay the same.
Is this by say, per?
Yes, right on the opposite corner, diagonally across the street.
You had the garages where you approved apartments about a few months ago.
Yeah, because it is, it's a good area, good space. It's not like a jam in it in there, it's all.
Oh, it's a lot of land.
Right.
And it's a, it's a really big home, and the only interest we had were like groups that wanted to rent the house. When we tried to rent the house, it was a seven-bedroom, single-family.
It didn't work.
It's not, it's not that desirable to.
Just like why you're not modifying the outside of the house, it's a very beautiful building.
Yeah, we're cleaning up now, we took off the old plastic shutters and we're cleaning up everything, we clean up all landscaping around there.
Yeah.
Lot overgrowth, that's all gone away, you can actually see the front of the building now.
Is there any easements or anything in here? I know that area has easements.
There are previous easements that you can see on the plot plan, to the right for drainage easement for the subdivision that was down on the right-hand side on Central.
Right.
That's the only easement, that's, gives them a drainage easement on the left side of their driveway.
Can you just discuss a little bit more what the hardship that would qualify for variance?
Well, so the hardship is twofold. We have a lot of land, but we don't have enough land to subdivide the property to make any decent lot size. It's more of a, I think, not so much, it's the size of the dwelling, it's an irregular-sized dwelling. We have interior space, seven bedrooms, and almost 3,800 square feet of space that's finished right now in the house. And it's, to rent that, like I said, the only thing, interest we had were groups of people that want to rent the home. And under your bylaws, that's not allowed under certain groups. And I think at this point, I don't know what else to do with the property, other than demolish it and come up with a new plan, which I'd hate to see that happen to a house that I think is pretty favorable to the community, it's been there a long time.
Okay, thank you. Eddie?
No, I was gonna ask the same question. Thank you.
Any further questions for him? I'm going to miss his turn. If anyone else in the audience wants to come up and speak, come up and speak. Does anyone else want to speak on this project that's here? And I would entertain a motion to close the public portion of this.
Submotion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we're gonna bring it back to our board discussion of what to do with it.
I just got one question now, lot area, this is the whole area that's owned, this whole area right here, including this area in the back?
Yeah, the, yes, but that's where that drainage easement is.
Okay.
It's on that left side.
And that's gonna be left wide open?
It's gonna be left, exactly as you see it.
Okay, because those two areas?
We may add a partial fence along that, because it's like a, they put in like a drainage ditch.
I was just wondering about those, you know, it's a good area of land back there.
Oh no, yeah, so that's what's attracting about the whole of the building.
All right, so that's gonna be open space.
That's correct.
All right. Discussion of most of the board.
Well, I think it's, I think it's a good idea he has with, you know, saving the property, saving the buildings.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't think there's any real hardship, I mean, anything to the neighborhood that it would affect.
Right.
The buildings right here before. So water may be a problem for them, but they'll have to figure that out themselves.
Yeah.
The good thing is they're keeping the buildings.
Right, and better to see that occupied and in use, I think, than, you know, demolished in the future. Hate to lose a building like that in town.
And there's only one interest to this, right? Is it two?
The interest is on Central.
Okay.
It has two driveways on Central, like a U shape.
All right, yep, I see it. But I'm sure it's not going out to Plymouth Street, correct?
No, that's correct.
No, that's not, that's just crap.
I mean, it's a good project. Eddie?
No, I'm not a voting member.
Yeah, but I just don't wanna hear your opinion.
As long as he checks all the boxes for the variance, that's what you need to decide.
I mean, I don't disagree with your, you know, statements about the project as a whole. I mean, the only concern I have is that, you know, the desire to gain additional rental revenue was not necessarily what we determined to be a hardship in the past, so it's a bit of a slippery slope there, you wanna make more money on the property, which I appreciate, but.
I don't, I don't know if that's necessarily the case at all. I think we've been offering a lot of money to write that to groups, we chose not to try and go that route, because that's all the approach we have. It's not gonna be a net gain for us. We could rent to one group and make more. We're choosing not to do that, we're asking to make something that's more controlled.
Okay.
Less detrimental to the community overall.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you. Any further discussion next to the board?
I have nothing.
Entertain a motion as to what to do with this petition.
Make a motion on the petition of Michael Ahern for a variance under section 175-21.a.2. The stated in the application, the petitioner is proposing to convert a seven-bedroom, single-family home to a proposed two-family home. The proposed home is located at 466 Plymouth Street, on Assessor's Map 40, Lot 59, in the residential 30, R30 zone, as shown in the plans provided to us.
Second?
Second.
All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Motion is approved? So I think you'll get, I have to sign a letter, you know, in a few days that you'll get from Marion.
You know the routine.
I know the routine.
He's already under construction, so.
Thank you. Thank you, members of the board, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Before we move on to our last agenda item, I failed to acknowledge our new associate board member, which I'd like to this time. I'm sorry that I've not heard your name pronounced, but it's.
Andrew Lebrault.
That's what?
Andrew Lebrault.
Lebrault?
Yep.
Okay, very good. Thank you for not letting me butcher your name. Appreciate you being here, we've run ourselves a bit short a few times this past year, so thank you.
Happy to be aboard again.
All right. The remaining item on our agenda is petition of Goslin Home Builders LLC for special permits under section 175-21a2, to allow for a duplex dwelling on Lot A Bedford Street and Lot B West Chapel Street, a variance under section 175-40B, section one, to allow for driveway parking in the front yard of Lot A. Property is located at 207 Bedford Street, on Assessor's Map 23, Lot 25, in the transitional commercial zone. Is that a so who you are and your address?
Good evening, my name's Attorney Sean Riley at 500 Washington Street in Abington Center, and I'm here representing Mr. Steve Goslin from Goslin Home Builders LLC, which I think you're familiar with Mr. Goslin, and he's sitting here in the front row to my left. This is the property, as you mentioned, at the corner of Bedford Street and West Chapel Street, it's in the transitional commercial zoning district. There's been a little history of this property as of late, and I know a lot of the neighbors are aware of it. I haven't been to those hearings, but I've heard about them. There was a gentleman who had purchased the property and made a proposal for multifamily proposal on that property, actually several multifamily proposals. It started out with more than 10, then it was reduced, then it was reduced again, and he didn't show up at the last planning board meeting, is what I was told. That may now be beyond us. Mr. Goslin has purchased the property from him and would like to walk away from the multifamily proposed use here. In this zone, a special permit is required for a multifamily use. A multifamily, as you know, is three or more units. And typically, one of the driving forces when you're into three or more units is not only how many units can you fit, but how much parking can you fit? And that kind of determines whether you're gonna have six, eight, 13, whatever it is. Steve would like to downsize it, I think you're familiar with some of his projects in town, and he's proposing to take the property, I submitted a plan to you that's on file to registry of deeds, it actually is three lots that have been combined, and he now owns them. His proposal, that's the plan there, the old plan under registry of deeds, showing some of the Chapel Street, which is now West Chapel Street, lots. He's submitted a plan that would split that property into two lots, which has been signed off by the planning board under the form A procedures. The two lots, can you go to that other?
One more, please.
Thank you.
This one?
Yes, please, thank you. The two lots are Lot A, which faces Bedford Street, and Lot B, which faces West Chapel Street. And the first thing we have to demonstrate is that we comply with the minimum dimensional requirement. So in the transitional commercial zone, you're required to have at least 10,000 square feet of lot area. Lot A on Bedford Street has 14,595, Lot B has 11,696, so they both comply with lot area. Frontage and lot width, you need to have at least 100 feet of frontage and lot width. Lot A has just over 161 feet of frontage and 100 feet of width. Lot B on West Chapel has 140 feet of frontage and 116.9 feet of width. The front yards have to be at least 40 feet deep, which they are on both properties. Side yards are required to be at least 10 feet, and 25 feet on the West Chapel lot, because there's a, there's a thing in the zoning bylaw about the side lot line against, next to a existing residential building, it has 25. We exceed both anyhow. Where 25 is required, we have 37, where 10 is required, we have 18. And the rear yard, like, also, the way we've designed it, unlike the prior proposals, where as I understand, the prior owner was building a house and putting in a lot of pavement, and there was a lot of concern about where the water was gonna go, especially down towards the West Chapel and the Everett Street houses. So what Mr. Goslin is proposing is a large backyard, and you can see the backyard is almost 80 feet from his building to his lot line, so it's, you almost double that to the neighbor out into the rear on Everett Street. The reason we're here tonight is, under the transitional commercial zone, it's really intended to promote and allow small commercial uses with low traffic, low impact, to abutting uses. I said small commercial uses. We're not proposing commercial, so under the transitional commercial, it also does allow multifamily residential with a special permit, and I wanted to note, in doing my research preparing for this, I'm not so sure we actually need a special permit for the two-family. And the reason I say that, and I'm just gonna give you a copy of this, if you look at the bylaw, it says that one and two families are allowed. But if you look at the zoning chart at the end, it still says it needs a special permit, that a multifamily three or more, or a two-family would need a special permit. That's the text of the bylaw, here's where it says one or two allowed, and that's the chart.
Yeah.
I just wanted to give you each, you've seen that discrepancy too?
Yeah.
We've applied for the special permits, just to make sure, if the Board of Building Commission decides we don't need them, that's fine, I don't think we do, but better safe than sorry to request it. And if there is a question, I would ask and suggest that the board actually approve it, approve the requested special permits, if you find that we comply. But we, the bylaw itself does not require a special permit. We've applied for it, nevertheless. Special permits, you need to demonstrate that you're not going to overload town water, town sewer, which we wouldn't with a two-family use. These are both limited to two bedrooms in each unit, so a total of four bedrooms in each building. The sewer, there's not an issue with sewer in Abington at this point, there won't be an overload. As far as drainage goes, what we've designed is typical residential driveway and a lot more green space than what was prepared before, and we have intentionally, as I mentioned, tried to keep the green space closest to our neighbors and keep the buildings and the driveway, especially the Bedford Street property, which we've shown on the plan, the driveway parking area would be in the front yard. The transitional commercial zoning district bylaw require, does not allow parking in the front yard, unless the board grants a variance. I think that is because it's, transitioned commercial is written with an intent that it be a commercial use, and they want the commercial buildings up along Route 18 with the parking in the rear. When you go and say, I don't wanna do commercial use, I'm surrounded by residential uses, I'd like to do residential, it's telling us, if I can approach the screen, and I know I can't touch it or remove, the alternative is, I'm gonna turn it back, is to move the house up front and put the parking in the backyard, which is what the bylaw requires, unless the commander is paying. That's exactly what we don't wanna do, and that's exactly, I think, one of the big problems that the planning board and neighbors have had with the prior application, because this was all, there'll be a lot of pavement out back here, and the water's coming this way. So this is all green space, and I mentioned it, that's 79 feet until it gets to the back of this property. This is all green space, and as typical residential driveways, here, in consultation with the building department, we've intentionally put the driveways just in the sides of the building. It's kind of a weird, you know, secrecy, but we're not supposed to park in the front yard, but they suggest and require side yard and rear yard parking. So if you have, by putting the driveways on the side of the building, much like most of the residential neighbors, a lot of houses will do, we're parking in the side yard. Now, obviously, to get to any part of the property, you're crossing over and perhaps parking in what you consider the front yard, but in talking with the building department, we said, if you keep it on the side, we'll consider that compliant with the requirement and intent of the bylaw. Here, however, we need a variance to put the pavement on Route 18, and need the grass lawn in the rear. If it's denied, then we would just build the building, as I said, and put the parking in the rear, which we hope we won't do, but it is something we have asked for. I also wanted to show Steve, because you know Steve's wife was a landscape designer. Can you pass up the smaller ones to the board? I'll put this one up here. This is just a landscape diagram of the variance area. Just showing that we're putting some landscape parking in. There is a privilege edge along Route 18, just to give the residents of this new building a little privacy, and you see green space, a lot of parking. So you'll see, we put some trees, if you're looking at the building, the property from Bedford Street, trees to the right, and you see the edges, it runs kind of parallel with Route 18 there, just to soften it, so that it doesn't look like a residential parking area, because it's gonna be a residential dwelling. The other thing I wanted to highlight to you is the footprints of these buildings, the size of these buildings are very comparable to the surrounding residential buildings. I took a look at the 10 buildings, 10 houses, that are either across the street or behind us, on West Chapel Street or Everett Street, and out of those 10, six of them are either the same size or larger than what we are proposing, at least one or both of what we are proposing. We are proposing, our building would be 42 by 30, I think, 40 by 32 on West Chapel Street, and 36 by 30 on Bedford Street. Comparatively speaking, as I said, out of the six neighboring, 10 neighboring houses, six of them are either equal to or larger than that. So we're not building large buildings here on this property, and we do have, just looking at the plan, you can see a substantial amount of green space. The other benefit of not going with the multifamily proposal, multifamily triggers fencing requirements and kind of have to box it in. One and two families don't require fencing. We're happy to put up fencing if a neighbor wanted, but we're looking to kind of keep things open and natural for both existing neighbors and the residents who live here. So the impact is a lot smaller than the multifamily that's allowed by special permit. The impact is a lot different, and I think better, than the commercial use, which is allowed without coming to the zoning board. We would propose the special permit be granted if you think it's needed for the two-family use on Lot A and B, but we also ask for the variance for the front yard parking. And I wanna also add, one of the reasons and one of the difficulties with Lot A is it's a state highway. And so one of the reasons we're trying to put the parking up front is because we wanna leave the existing driveway cut where it is.
And that's the only variance?
Yes, it's, the only variance is whether you want the parking in the front or in the backyard. This is where the existing curb cut is. If it was to be moved, you'd have to apply to Mass Highway, and they may or may not grant it, they may. They may say leave it there in the house. And we designed it where Mass Highway already has a curb cut in Route 18.
So that's the existing driveway before they tore the house down?
Right, it's the existing curb cut. The driveway went back, the.
No, I'm sorry, it's the existing entrance to that property.
Same location.
Yes, sir.
Same location. So the only two quote-unquote new entrances would be the smaller driveways on West Chapel Street. You see?
Does that front one need to be extended, extended with or anything like that?
No.
The one on, I'm sorry.
On Bedford Street. Being residential, we have intentionally put in a couple of extra parking spots on this property because we know you can't park on Route 18.
Right.
So we designed it so that we don't encounter that problem, that there's extra parking on our property. I think.
The width is good, though, for the driveway.
Yeah, the width is fine, it complies with everything.
Okay.
Yep. So it conforms with all the dimensional requirements, it has more than sufficient lot size, it has way more lot width than you need, I'm sorry, lot frontage than you need. The special permit, I would get, ask for a discussion with you guys as to whether it's even needed, but if there's a doubt, perhaps it might be wiser to grant it. So there is no question moving forward, but it is something I'm going to talk with the building department about. We got to fix the chart, correct, because there's that conflict. But the variance, I hope you would agree, that given the fact of the existing curb cut, where that is located in this lot, it really kind of makes it a little bit difficult. That's our hardship in there. And then also, the, really, you create a hardship if you put the parking out back. Not so much for us, but more so for the neighbors. And it just, I think, also takes away from kind of the residential nature. If you stop putting parking in the back of a residential building, it looks more like a commercial thing that you're living next to. So that's the proposal with Steve. This is the landscaping plan that shows how we're trying to soften that parking in the front. It's a pretty straightforward plan. I know the neighbors are very curious, because this has been a pain in the butt for them over the last several months.
Years.
Years, sorry. Yeah, I haven't been following it. And I hope they realize, and you know, some of the work that Steve has done in Abington, where not only does he build good quality stuff, but he maintains it very well. My mother lives in one of these places, so I trust him, and if she trusts him, anybody should. But it's, he does good quality work, and this, I think it would be a good upgrade. The prior owner did demolish what was there, and I heard that was an issue too. But with your approval tonight, Steve would be able to get moving and clean up that property. Happy to answer any questions. Steve's here to answer any questions, if the neighbors have any questions.
Is there any questions for him from the public? Anybody in the audience?
Wait. Hold on.
What's that?
Maybe the Board first.
Well, I thought we, I thought we were done asking.
We haven't even started.
Okay, good, then go.
Yeah.
I misunderstood.
So the property on Chapel Street is two separate lots, correct? A, B?
No, one lot.
One lot?
I don't know if it's easier to see on this.
Well, just look at the subdivision.
I called it on this plan, because it is kind of a flaw.
Was it two lots at one time, the Chapel Street side, and now it's more?
Three.
Three?
Oh, so it's three, okay. And now it's.
I gave a copy of that.
Yeah, I'm looking at this one right here.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's the old plan, so. This is, I put up, maybe that's Mr. Libby's house to get you acclimated, sorry, right there.
Yep.
This is now combined.
All combined into one lot.
And we also owns it, and we're splitting it to two instead of the three that originally was back in the day.
Okay, two lots.
Two lots.
Two lots, just to show on the plan.
All right.
Okay.
Because I'm just looking at this one here, it looked different.
Yeah, I just want to give you that historically, just how that property came together.
So are they, they're both two families, correct? Am I right?
Correct. Two two-bedroom residences on each lot. So a total of four bedrooms on each lot.
And it doesn't seem like we're overcrowding the property. Seems like there's good enough space. Anybody else?
Yes. Question number one, Bedford Street entrance, snow remover, where are you going to put the snow?
We have, you can see where Steve's actually designed it. We'd be able to push it onto our property, two locations. We could push it this way, and we can also push it this way. Because we're good, at this point, 20-plus feet away from this lot line, and we have all that, we push there.
Now, does that elevation go, does it go to the back?
It's also flat in the front, but I believe it starts to go down a little bit towards the back, right? Everett Street is lower, yeah.
Both West Chapel and Orange dip in the back.
Right.
And so the question we had in the previous one was pushing it to the downside towards Orange Street, was where is that water going to go? And if you push it to your side yard just beyond the building, I guess there's enough lawn there that we wouldn't have that too much of a problem for wetland purposes and washing out. So if that's the plan with the snow, since you're so close to the road, you would have to take the snow in from Bedford Street and move it to that side yard or the backyard. Because you couldn't push out to the street at all.
Pretty much what everyone does on Bedford, what everyone does on Chapel Street.
So I go up to Chapel, I go right around the corner, my first concern, it's not just a concern, it's the driveway, the closeness to Route 18 and getting out onto Route 18.
Yeah.
I have two major concerns on egress.
Yeah.
In exit. I'm thinking that, I live on Orange Street. I can spend 1 minute and 30 seconds just to get onto Orange, just to get onto 18 if I'm going right. I can spend up to three minutes if I want to go left.
Right.
Because people just don't let you in. If that's your primary egress for two cars to come in and out, or four cars to come in and out, then you go to Chapel Street, and I don't know what the distance is between the corner lot and the edge of the driveway being 20 feet wide, but the guy in the second part has a better chance getting onto West Chapel and getting out than the guy in front. That's my opinion only, so I'm just putting it out. Now, on that second lot that you created, it looks like Mr. Libby has a shed that's egressing on your property?
Yes, that's okay. Absolutely, absolutely. Steve has talked to me, the survey shows that shed's been there for a zillion years. Right. Doesn't interfere with our plans. If Mr. Libby wants it moved, Steve will move it, but.
Please, one second. I just have one more concern before you address. So you talked about Lot B, you had to have so much distance from the side street in to build, you'd need, what, 40 feet in, you have to have the residents?
The setback.
Yeah, so you couldn't move that house closer and look for a variance or something like that and put the parking behind that house in Lot B, instead of putting it to the side?
You could, so it's what happened to that, so we actually, or this to the dotted line?
Yep.
That's the buildable area according to setback regulations.
Oh, okay. I apologize.
If we go forward, we violate front yard.
Okay.
If you notice, there's a 25-foot setback on this side.
This side, yeah.
Which we're 37 feet away.
Okay. Now, I, but my thought process was, we originally had agreed, well, not agreed, but the conversation with the previous proposal was to have a one-way in from Bedford Street and one way out to West Chapel Street, so that we wouldn't be putting traffic both ways on both streets. So that's not going to work in this situation with the two families. But you've answered my question on the snow, you've answered my question on where you're going to put the snow in the two driveways. You can either push them straight into either side of the building, or push them to the left or right, correct? And be legally okay to do that?
Yeah, we put the snow anywhere on our property, their property, Mr. Goslin's property it is.
Yeah, okay. No, I'm good, thank you.
I guess just to follow up on that point, what about some kind of easement through the West Chapel, through that parking lot, so they can park behind the Lot A? You know what I mean? Could you do a driveway that just comes straight through, have parking, and then allow them to access Lot A through Lot B?
Not without a variance, again. Driveway has to come through your own frontage, which I wish they would change that bylaw, so you'd have the flexibility to do things such as that, but no, you can't.
Other questions from the Board?
He's going to be Michael, so they, right now, yes.
Steve says, just for the microphone, Steve says, right now, yes. Most of your property is rental, he maintains and manages it all? It just, if I can throw one other thing out, to just, you know, like, for example, the West Chapel Street driveway, you can see the house is a little bit more than 40 feet off the road, and our driveway extends that full distance, so that means that the driveways are a little bit more than 40 feet, which means you can easily park four cars in that driveway if you had to. Again, trying to keep people from parking on the street. They're allowed to park on the side street on West Chapel Street, I'm sure some of the neighbors do when they have parties or whatever. We're trying to minimize that whenever possible by putting it on our property. Lot 18, you can't park on.
So from November to May, they still have the same?
Oh, yeah.
Right?
Yeah, right, everyone, no one can park during winter.
Right, okay.
So really, all we have tonight to decide is whether or not that parking on Lot A is either out front with a variance, or if we don't grant the variance, then we can put it out back.
Correct. If everyone sitting at the table agrees that the special permit is not necessary because of this.
Should we vote on a special permit anyway? Since it was already brought up.
I think we should.
Yeah, I guess my point is that there's not a lot that we have control over.
Oh, no, 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 no.
He's got a right to build both buildings.
Right, exactly.
So whether or not the parking will be out front or out back.
We always, we always try to comply so we don't have to go to the zoning Board. Steve said pretty good, and we had an original design with the parking out back, and we both called each other, like, I wouldn't want to build that. You know, he didn't want to do that, so we had the engineer redraw it and said, let's go ask for the grants, we think this is a good reason why, we'd rather have a big backyard than a big front yard.
And one of the reasons why is because the neighborhood?
Right.
As I always say.
You hear the questions?
There's no site plan, but it's necessary for this.
No, this is the hearing, that's where we want to bring the landscaping tonight.
So let's go a little into the landscaping, what kind of shrubber are you going to have and trees?
He speaks language, but you use the microphone. Yeah, it is on the submitted way.
It's on the right hand corner.
Oh, that's in the front.
It's really small prints.
Well, it looks like in the front, there's going to be shrubberies and the two trees.
I see, I see what, but what kind of?
I'm going to use the common name, not the Latin name, okay? It lists both. So six green velvet boxwoods, two pusa dogwoods, two vanilla strawberry hydrangeas, 26 California privet hedges, that's that hedge that runs across the.
Straight, that's what it was more, more looking at.
It's a private hedge, so.
How high is that? The other building gets nothing?
What's that?
The other building gets nothing?
No, they'll be landscaping over the, because this lot had the variance we had to.
Oh, okay, all right.
How high does it go? It's whatever you let it go.
Yeah, yeah.
So it would be enough, like, we might let it go enough, like, it would block headlights shining out to Route 18 and block headlights from across the street shining onto this property. But you don't need it to be 70 feet off. There's also two other, four peach-griff rose bushes.
You've got to admit, though, this is pretty much locking Bedford Street in. I mean, those people are going on Bedford Street, they're not going to be able to cut over the chapel.
To get in and out.
Yeah. But I guess they have to do what they have to do without getting another variance.
The only other, the only way you can do that is, you know, start having driveways cross other passes is making one condominium project with two or three buildings on it.
And we're only talking about two.
Right.
Two apartments here, we're not talking about four, five, six. I mean, what does that bring to the volume? Maybe four or five cars?
Two on each, total of four, right. And if you compare, look at the footprint of the proposed buildings comparatively to the buildings that are shown neighborly. So just so you know, we're not building a huge structure.
Compared to the other builds around us, the neighborhood, in other words.
All right. Other questions from Mr. Riley on the Board? Anybody else?
Not right now.
Okay. If anyone from the audience would like to come up and speak, please let us know your name and your address. Let Mr. Libby go first. Mr. Libby, I think was.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Velvus, I live at 112 Everett Street. So I know, I can appreciate what you're trying to do. I like the parking in the front, giving us extra room in the back. Our main concern is the West Chapel side. West Chapel is extremely narrow. It barely fits two cars wide. So if anyone decides to park on that street, you can't, you can't fit down. You're backing a car up or pulling, you know, pulling a car forward. So the last time we met with the Planning Board, we actually got them to agree that it's actually too dangerous to have an outlet onto West Chapel. And they told the previous owner, you have to go straight up in and out of Bedford. You can't create any opening onto West Chapel. Because the way you have it, you have 18 and West Chapel, and then across from West Chapel diagonally is the inlet to the Avalon apartment complex. And so you have people gunning it diagonally across to get down West Chapel. You have people trying to come off of Bedford Street, gunning it because it's so, there's so much traffic on Bedford Street. That poor person so close to the edge, I guarantee their car will be totaled within six months. Because it's, the people are just flying, and there's no room for error there. There's no extra room, it barely fits two cars wide. So I know in the zoning laws, it says that that driveway really should be at least 75 feet from the corner. It doesn't look like it. I don't know how far it is from the corner.
I don't know what you're talking about.
In the zoning bylaws, it talks about driveways, when they're on a corner of an intersection, they have to be 75 feet from the intersection. So I'm just wondering how far that driveway, that initial driveway is. Okay. And then, how many, how tall would the building be?
Everything meets the code, I think it's 135 feet.
So you would max it?
I'm not sure right now.
Okay, so it would be two stories, three stories?
Two stories.
Two stories, okay. Would you need to blast, would be a huge concern?
I don't think so, no.
Are you sure? Because every other project in that area has had to blast.
It's all on ledge.
All ledge.
It's all red at ledge, you can see in the backyards.
Plenty of just bits on the right side, not in the area where I'm going to put them up.
So you, no, okay. Yeah, so my, just my main concerns is putting any kind of inlet or outlet onto West Chapel. It's a recipe for disaster, it's extremely dangerous to have anything there, so. I can tell you that the zoning law has it. So it's 175, 47, B to C.
Thank you.
But you're also, it also says something about when you have two driveways, it's supposed to have at least 75 feet, if you have two driveways as well in the intersection, which doesn't look like it over there, so.
Anyone else?
Hi.
Name and address, please.
My name is Christina Walker, I live at 4 West Chapel Street, so I live directly across the street from the proposed two driveways. So the design considerations for transitional commercial properties, so this is the definition, states that common access driveways and shared parking facilities should be provided or encouraged where possible to minimize traffic problems. So I've lived here for about four years, and I can tell you, in those four years, I've seen at least five accidents on that corner. And two of those years were during COVID, so the traffic wasn't even as bad as it is right now. The addition of the two driveways, so bylaws say no more than one driveway shall be allowed on any street frontage. Driveways should be no closer than 75 feet to any intersection of street lines, and multiple driveways on the same street frontage shall be not less than 75 feet apart. I don't think, I think the first one is 40 feet from the corner of Bedford and West Chapel, if I can count or measure correctly. And I doubt, and I think it's just at 75 feet for the second driveway. Though people fly in and out of that intersection like you wouldn't believe. I know that you had said previously, the first person, that first driveway, they're going to get into an accident within a month. People don't look, they go flying around the corner when they take a right onto West Chapel, and people that are taking a left onto West Chapel also go flying because they need to get in front of the other people that are coming. Also, those two driveways would just be shining right into my house, so the light popu, uh, light pollution would be a problem for me. Town bylaws also for buffer states that multi-unit residential units, and I don't know if you consider duplexes multi-unit residential units, provide adequate buffering along all lot lines adjoining the residential properties by at least twenty feet with screening such as trees. I know that you had talked somewhat a bit about the landscaping. And then, the, I know that you had said about the blasting, I know you probably, you know, so the rock ledge that does run through Abington literally runs through my basement. So I have part of my land is here and part of it's here because the rock ledge is straight through. And so part of the rock wall is literally my basement walls. So if there was any blasting or anything that had to do, and my, front of my house to the side of their property is forty-eight feet. So anything within two hundred and fifty feet there are required to give us, like, a home inspection for free if they are to do blasting, but if they were to blast, I'm, I can guarantee you that something would happen to my house because it's literally right there. That's pretty much, and and I, and I just, are we having landscaping on the second lot? Because it's, it doesn't look like there's anything there.
There's nothing on that plan shown because that wasn't the variance.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just respond to some kids' fire fight?
Please.
Because two people mentioned about the driveway locations. With all due respect, section one forty-seven B about driveways has two sections, and they're quoting section two. We, we're under section one, section one is for one and two family uses. The seventy-five foot from the intersection, seventy-five foot distance between driveway applies under section two, which is all other uses. So in the previous hearings you were at with the multifamily use, all of those things you mentioned apply, but they don't apply to a one or two-family residential dwelling. So the plan does comply with the driveway bylaw, okay? The blasting I know is a concern in that area, it's not really in the purview of the zoning board to decide blasting. If he had to deal with blasting, there are requirements through the fire department and all that to go through. He doesn't want to blast, he doesn't have to blast, it's expensive, so that's really not an issue here for this, for this hearing, for this meeting. But I just wanted to respond respectfully, you're a hundred percent right if this was multifamily, but because it's one and two, that plan is okay.
Did the planning board approve this, this layout? Is that what I understood from earlier?
Planning board doesn't have to, we, planning board, again, multifamily is the trigger for a lot of requirements, including cycle interview. One-family houses, two-family houses don't need cycle interview, don't apply to section two of the driveway issue.
You could find multi first, because it appears that we're all under a different assumption of multi.
Sure. Multifamily is three or more units in a building.
Well, it says one or two family uses.
I was answering his question.
No, I'm just saying.
You're, yeah, you're, you're looking at section one.
Yep.
Which is, so under one and two family uses, it tells you what you have to do. The seventy-five foot requirements from the intersection between driveways is.
That's true, yeah.
All other uses.
All other, right.
Right, so once you do commercially use or three units or more, section two applies.
Three units or more, alright, right.
Please let us know your, your name and address.
Judy O'Brien, thirty-six West Chapel Street. I'm three houses down from the corner, on the opposite side of this property here. So I heard what you were asking about the snow removal for the first lot that's coming out onto Route eighteen, but I didn't quite hear anything that would be for West Chapel Street. So that's my first question, is what would be the plan for snow removal onto West Chapel? Because I'm talking, also, okay, that's, that's good to hear that they hopefully would push it back. But the plows coming down the street make that street, which is narrow already, much more narrow. So that's a concern too, already, so I'm really concerned about the snow. I'm also concerned, as will the other neighbors, about the traffic gunning it across to get down to West Chapel. I'm not kidding that it probably takes until at least number twenty-six next door to me or my driveway many times for a car to start slowing down that's coming from across the street, especially at rush hour when they have to gun it to make it. Also, I have pulled out, I don't go out onto West, I mean, onto Route eighteen from West Chapel at many times during the day and take a left. I have to go all the way around because it's too dangerous, okay? So that's a concern. I have come out onto Route eighteen several times and literally made a gasping noise as a car has come quickly missing, like, you know, coming down the middle of West Chapel Street. And like, I swear I was going to be hit head on, and we have had multiple accidents. I've been there for over thirty years, there've been multiple accidents, especially in the last several years at that corner. So that's a concern. The other concern I have is you all have parties, you all celebrate, I'm sure, holidays, graduations, birthdays. I am concerned about the two driveways, first off, coming onto West Chapel, but then you have four families, or at least two families on West Chapel, and four, if, because the people on, coming out onto Route eighteen aren't going to have any parking, all that parking is going to come onto West Chapel, making a narrow street even narrower, and especially at Christmas, you know, during the day where you could have snow. So those are lots of things that I'm concerned about. You know, we've got lots of kids, we've had animals hit and killed on the street because, you know, it, it happens, I understand, it's part of life, but I'm trying to prevent and keep my family safe as best I can, and I'm just trying to make everybody kind of, you know, where I'm coming from. So I'm concerned, like, we have the St. Patrick's Day parade, for one thing, right down the end of the street. And I'm telling you, the, the street is just on both sides, and now you're going to add four more families who are going to have people that are there in parking. Where is everybody going to park? Are they not allowed to, I mean, honestly, I will tell you that behind me, when they put that development in, we were told they won't have parties. Okay, so we know they do, so that's a huge concern. The other concern I have is, I'm really feeling bad that nobody was allowed to know and go to the planning board meeting. Granted, it must, you know, not in the laws that needed or whatever bylaws. But it started out with one type of property, yes, it got moved down, but it, it also got moved down to, it's unsafe for driveways to come out onto West Chapel. They told that builder, that owner, that it is unsafe, we will not allow that. So I'm concerned, like, now all of a sudden it's okay? I don't know.
I don't understand where you want to go with the thought.
Please let us know your name and address.
I'm sorry, my name is John Libby, I live at twenty-one West Chapel Street.
Thank you, thank you.
If you come out of eighteen, I'm the first house on the right. Like I tell you, I'm not against your project, what I'm against is the driveways on West Chapel Street coming out. My wife and I have been in, in that neighborhood for over fifty years, and I was always brought up with the fact that it was only a half a lot. I almost had a heart attack when I found out it was going to be changed to an A and B lot, which I couldn't understand how that could possibly happen. And this poor lady over here, she was always, I mean, interesting, when she bought that house on Chapel Street, there in the corner, no one was going to be able to build on the other side. So I'm not against the project, if only we could put the traffic on eighteen into the project instead of putting a driveway, two driveways on West Chapel Street. If you can keep away from that, you might have something going. But the only way, I would like to say, you know, there's an easy way, but there isn't. You heard the complaints about the traffic on West Chapel Street. I come out of my driveway and all I'm hearing is great, because they're coming off of eighteen, and they don't even get a chance to see me coming out of the driveway. And so that's our main concern. And of course, blasting is another situation. We had that when they went to put the sewers in, it was like a rock and roll neighborhood. And they said, you know, it's not going to be that bad this time, that's the last, people that took that, were going to take over that land. And so that's another concern, we're worried about it, the blasting. We're worried about the water, runoff water from the land is strong. Even though you've got the pack on on the back, that's all the snow's going to go. So that, you know, those are my only.
Thank you. Mr. Riley, or somebody else want to come up and speak?
Hi, good evening, Jonathan Walker for West Chapel. Try not to repeat too much that my wife and others have said. I do appreciate, thank you, you are very much more well-prepared for this, and we appreciate all the plans that are in place. My main concern, or many of my concerns, is, one, we do see the landscape plan, and we know, and one of my concerns that I've brought up many times is the three-to-one ratio that you need to have for every three trees you cut down, you need to plant one tree. If you've been by that lot, you know that lot is extremely overgrown. So for every third tree you cut down, there's not enough trees on that plan to equal that equation. We also have a problem with the parking. Coming onto West Chapel is very difficult. I know we've been there for a while, we have a problem with the blasting. We also have a problem with the light pollution, like she said. We also feel that, and it was said earlier by his representation, you know, we wanted to make our way over to the neighbors, but we haven't yet. You know, this feels very behind the scenes again and again and again. We didn't know about the planning meeting two days ago, we surely would have been here for that, to express our concerns there as well. We also feel that this is, like, we used to get notices in the mail, we used to recognize the different members. I know it changes, I was told that it changes, but like, for our comfort level, you know, in one session, we're talking to one individual, and then in the next session, we're talking to somebody else. That's kind of disheartening for us, because, you know, we have, we feel like we've made some weight with one board member, and then all of a sudden, it's that board member knows this person or that person, and then, you know, we hear a lot of in-town dealings, you know, you've dealt with this person before, and blah, 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 well, you haven't dealt with us yet, and it's like, we're all Abington residents, like, we should get the same fair shake that they do. I do appreciate, like I said, the planning that goes into this. I think what gets me a little bit is the fact that he can build whatever he wants, when he wants, he doesn't need permission, he can just do it. Like, that's not, doesn't seem like the right way to go. He's just coming here tonight because he needs a special variance. Like, for all I know, I could go away for a couple of months, come back, and there's a structure. I would never go away for that long, but, you know what I'm saying, like, we wouldn't know. We didn't even know this was going on, we bumped into our neighbor, and it's like, hey, you going to a planning board meeting? Like, what are you talking about, planning board meeting? So typically, we would get noticed, typically, we would be more prepared for these than, like, comes in with a forty-five minute, you know, presentation, and what do I have? I'm coming off the cuff and giving you my emotional state because we don't know about this, we didn't have time to prepare. So, you know, keep that in mind when we're frustrated, we're obviously frustrated because to us, not knowing, it looks like you guys are making deals behind our back. Even though that might not be the case, that's what it looks like, so.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, other people want to come up and speak? Please do.
My name is Mike Najalas, I live at two thirty-seven Bedford Street. My concern is, as we spoke before, is about trash, are there dumpsters on site? Or is it going to be town trash, because that's going to make a spot that the snow cannot go? And second of all, about this park, you know, the driveways on West Chapel, is there any possibility in planning that they can have parallel driveways off of Bedford Street to open that existing driveway up more? It's already there, I know you have to go through state, I do know that, I understand that. But I was just saying, were those properties going to be so close together? What is wrong with a parallel driveway going in to Bedford Street? And it's not going to be a lot of cars going in and out of there, so that changes a lot from the previous attempt. That's about it, thank you.
Thank you.
Jan Ciari, one oh four Everett Street, I'm not going to read this whole thing because frankly, I was pretty angry when I wrote it, and that's not going to do anybody any good, so I'm just going to read points of it, might sound a little bit disjointed. I apologize for that in advance. We're here tonight because the previous owner finally cut his losses and sold off the land. It sounds to me like the new owner is trying to sell their proposal in terms of comparison to the last owner. Well, it's better than the last owner proposed, or it's better than the direction we could go in. You're also saying a lot of maybes, and we're thinking maybe, doesn't seem to be any committal of it will only be two stories, or, you know, we're, we're thinking we don't have to blast, okay? That's not an adequate response for me, especially in response to Carolyn's questions of him. He didn't seem to have solid answers. Keep in mind, there used to be an old, one single old Victorian on that property. So now it's like, why not four homes where one used to stand? It's not in fitting, in keeping with the neighborhood. I can't pretend, pretend to understand the bylaws as well as the new property owner or his representative. I can only plead for common sense. I'm asking, oh. I will reiterate what others have said about the outlets on West Chapel Street. Parking is one thing. Parking is one thing, but in that small stretch of land on West Chapel Street, coming off of Route eighteen, any outlet onto West Chapel Street would pose an extreme danger to drivers and pedestrians alike. There's no sidewalk there, but there are kids coming home from high school, okay? God forbid it's a child that's coming out of the driveway of his new townhome. Someone's going to get hurt if there are any outlets onto West Chapel Street. I'm not just talking aesthetics, I'm talking community safety. And I'm asking, I don't know what kind of leeway you have insofar as, you know, turning down a proposal because it just doesn't make sense. I don't know if it's, if they've got all their Ts crossed and all their Is dotted, and the square footage and the distance from and all that, even if that is all copacetic with you, I don't know, to their advantage, I don't know what the bylaws are, and if you have any leeway to say, yeah, this isn't safe, this isn't a good idea for public safety. Whether it be a right turn when heading north, or a left turn when heading south, or like a bolt of grease lightning across both lanes when exiting Ivana, or whatever it's called now. People come off Route eighteen onto West Chapel Street like bats out of hell. I know because I've been one of them. I'm just asking that you don't vote because this is a better proposal than we've seen in the past. It's bad, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before Mr. Riley comes up to respond to some of the comments?
Can we close it?
Well, I think you wanted to say one more thing, then, then we can both to close it. Go ahead.
I respect everything the neighbors just said, and frankly, we expected that you would say a lot because of what you've been through. because of what you've been through. I totally understand what you're saying. But you also have to understand that Steve has every right in the world to build on his property. And the reality is, yes, he does comply. He doesn't need a special permit. He's allowed to build a two-family with no zoning permit. The only thing we're really here for is a decision about whether to put the parking on the front of Bedford Street or behind the house closer to Everett Street. That's really the crux of the zoning board's jurisdiction tonight. The reason you weren't invited to the planning board hearing was because it wasn't a hearing. It wasn't a public hearing. It was administrative vote. They didn't see the design of the plan. That wasn't the point of the hearing. It was a blank plan showing where the new property line is. And they have to sign off saying, we can sign that plan as long as you can show that the lot is big enough and you have the frontage. That's the only questions they have to ask for a form A plan. It's just administrative thing that signs the lot. You're entitled to go, and Mrs. Siri was there.
So from Tuesday to tonight, you got this giant plan?
No, we had, we had this, but that doesn't go before the planning board. That, if it was a three-family or multifamily, like you saw before, yeah, that goes to the planning board. And it may also have to go to the zoning board, depending on what the proposal is. I understand that you're concerned about another driveway, two driveways on West Chapel Street, but he has the right to have access to his property. And the limitation of it being two bedroom residences, the two family, is limiting the, a volume of traffic that's there. Is it a concern, an issue for the resident? Yes, it might be, but that's gonna have to be something they live with. To say that we're not gonna allow anything, we're not gonna build anything, won't happen, so, you know, we don't wanna build multifamily, we don't wanna build transition. Is it better than those options? Yes, it is better than those options, admittedly so. But the use is really not in question here. The driveway locations are not in question here. They comply. They comply, and I understand the snow issues and all. That's why we have built more parking than needed. Each of these residences requires two and a half parking spaces, really, two spaces per bylaw. We have built four spaces for the houses, the residences on West Chapel Street for each unit. So there's plenty of off-street parking, which I would gather to say is probably more than more of the houses there. The lot sizes are much bigger. The one on Chapel Street, eleven thousand six hundred and ninety-six. Next door is just under sixty-three hundred square feet. The next house is just under eighty-three hundred square feet. Our lots are bigger. We have done our best effort to make this as, well, it does come by, but to make it as low-impact as possible. The only reason we're here is, with the board grant of variance, to have the parking in the front, or they deny it, we put the parking in the back. Thank you.
Can you just follow up on that, Jonathan?
Sure.
Because you do have a request in here for a special permit, and now you pointed out the fact that there was some ambiguity between the two. So do you wanna go forward with the special permit request?
Or do you wanna just hold off on it?
The building commissioner, I think it's the men's room, the man who makes those decisions. I don't think it's necessary. The clear reading of the bylaws says one or two families are allowed.
But if it is necessary, you'll have to come back.
Yep.
And I'd just like to say, we're a volunteer board here, we're not corrupt, as you just, someone just mentioned. We don't appreciate that. We try to do the best we can, we're volunteers here. We take up our own time to come here and do these meetings. So really, I don't appreciate that you think we're corrupt.
I didn't mean it that way, I'm just saying.
I've been on this board for a long time, and I've, you could ask anybody. I am not that type of person. You could ask Mr. Riley, actually, that this board tries to keep to the bylaws.
And to speak from my point of view, to avoid that effort, I intend to not socialize with anybody that sits on that, and no offense to you guys, but I think, whenever we show up in a backyard party, I try not to talk to them. Because I know someone's gonna say, oh, look at him swooshing up to Andy Birdline, or whatever. I just, no offense, Andy. Not that I don't like you, I just don't wanna put anybody in.
I just thought you didn't like me.
No.
I know you don't like me.
I understand your concern too, but that's not what's happening.
I like you.
Well, that's true.
So I'm just back to my.
Your question is, should I ask you for a vote for a special permit for the use on this?
Because if there is a vote for a special permit, then there are things that.
Yeah, then you can talk about.
Public safety and all.
Traffic, what do you call it? Water safety drainage, water sewer drainage. I don't, I brought it up because I don't think it's necessary.
You're the one who put the.
Yeah, I did.
So do you want us to vote on the special permit, or do you not, or do you want us to not?
I don't think we need it.
It would affect the thing.
Check the town.
Yeah, I gotta be very careful what I say here.
Should we put a hold on it, and if we have to come back?
Personally, I have to be very careful what I say here.
Right, exactly.
And exactly that, attorney.
Exactly.
I would need to consult with council.
If you wanna continue it and get town council's ruling on which one trumps the other, that's fine with us. So we'll leave it pending. There won't be any other notice. It'll just be scheduled for the next month's hearing, which is.
October tenth, I believe.
So you guys wanna do, or?
Well, we should, if we're gonna have a board discussion, we should bring it back to the board.
Well, don't close the hearing, though, if we're gonna continue, we don't wanna close the hearing.
That's true.
No, we've done this before, this isn't the first time we've done this. So don't think it's.
So we're talking about continuing just the variance part of this, right?
Not the whole.
The whole decision is we have a legal opinion on the special permit. Yeah, so continue without, what's the word, Andy? Continue without what? Bridges?
Bridges?
Just continue with it.
It's just a continuing.
Could I ask much to my client's chagrin? I have a conflict on October tenth. We would be willing to wait till the next one on November seventh, I believe it would be.
We have to have you sign something.
Or is it?
Yes.
Yeah, that's okay. November fourteen.
I agree, November fourteen.
November, yeah, Thursday, November fourteenth.
That'd be good.
Right.
Yeah, then you'll find time to talk with town council.
That works for you, that's.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with that.
She had a question in the back?
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
Come on up.
I don't know if this is out of your, what you do, I don't really understand.
Go ahead.
But if I could, I'd like to request that you folks actually walk that stretch of land between the end of Libby's property and Route eighteen. And see the small section of land that we're talking about, that whether they have the right to have two outlets there, if you feel it's right. Having said that, I will say, if you do, you're taking your life in your hands, if you walk it.
Thank you.
We would request the continuance to November, Thursday, November fourteenth, and I will sign an extension under the statute.
Okay. But you said there would be no further public notice on this particular issue, right?
Correct, there never is, it's a continuance, and the board will call up the date and time of the next, of the continuance. And if Attorney Riley's asking for it to be two meetings from now, then probably next week, I'll see Attorney Riley at the building department, I'll give him the form to sign, new intern will sign it. Once I timestamp that, that starts the new clock, since it's not a hundred days once a variance is requested, timestamp, and then ninety days for a special permit. So there's obviously a difference of timeframe. So that can be done easily, because normally, a continuance will last till the next meeting, and then you may need one. But in this case, we already know he's asking to be continued to November fourteenth, if the board grants it.
Okay. What do you folks think? I mean, I think that's a reasonable thing to do here, get a.
I think it's the best thing that we could do, we know, why don't you take a look? Take a look at it.
And if she comes, and if she comes back and says that they don't need a special permit, that the only thing that has to be decided is whether or not you grant the variance.
Right, right, so, yeah, okay. Alright, I would entertain a motion, we have, yeah, we actually have a motion on.
Continuances.
Continuance till November fourteenth.
Petition of Goslin Home Builders LLC for a special permit.
Seven oh five, yeah.
Yeah, you gotta state the time.
Yes.
On the petition of Goslin Home Builders LLC for a special permit under one seventy-five dash twenty-one A six-two, to allow for duplex building in lot A of Bedford Street, and lot B on West Chapel Street, in a variance under one seventy-five dash forty-B dash section one, to allow for the driveway parking in front yard for lot A, properties located at two oh seven Bedford Street, and Sussex Map twenty-three lot twenty-five in the transitional TC zone, for a continuance until November fourteenth at seven oh five P M.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you. See you November.
Before you guys leave, I mean, I just, you know, people, when people make a request for a variance or a special permit, we have to respond only to what they requested. And the town bylaws and adherence to those is managed by the buildings department for the height of buildings and all those things. And at this stage, we just sort out what things would need to push up against the bylaws in some cases, and, you know, we also, to reiterate what Rich said, that we also have a whole bunch of obligations to not associate with one another outside of this room, including electronic means. And so we don't do the bathroom stuff, but it is, I understand your concerns, and I, you know, I have four adult children now, five and a half grandchildren, and three stepkids, and, you know, road safety is a huge concern of mine, has been all my life, so. But sometimes we can't do anything about what the bylaws allow, and that may be the case here.
Sorry, I apologize.
No, you don't need to.
I honestly question there from many of the members, but from our perspective, you gotta look at, like, my wife and I bought this house in Abington to start our life brand-new. We were told it was a block and a half. No one's ever gonna be able to build on it.
Can I interrupt? I'm sorry, I really have to apologize. I have to leave.
Yep.
So I don't mean to be rude, but I have to leave. I was supposed to be somewhere with my family.
Great, thank you.
I mean, brothers, it's just, it's our perspective, it's just, anybody can build anything whenever they want, wherever they want, as long as they own it. And they don't have to talk to the neighbors, they don't have to, you know? That's, so for us, like, we just feel bamboozled. And I'm sorry if I offended anybody, but like, think about us, like, how we feel. We feel offended, because all of a sudden, this family is, or this builder is now gonna build whatever he wants on this property, because the previous guy couldn't get his stuff together. I'm glad that this guy's got plans, and he's got a good lawyer, and he's got everything going. But for us, like, like he said, we should've come and met you. We should've said something, hey, I bought the property, this is my idea, this is what we're gonna build. Hey, maybe we can work together as a community, and maybe find a common ground. And like I said, I'm all over it, I'm sorry if I offended anybody.
That's why I'm on the board.
Yeah.
That's, I've had the same thing, the same feelings, and that's why I'm on the board today.
We find you guys, like I said.
Yeah. Well, I just, we thank you. We're gonna close the hearing.
Yeah, we really do appreciate all your comments, and, you know, picking your concerns on board. One thing, we are limited in what we can respond to. Motion to close the hearing?
No, 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 no. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, not to close the hearing.
I wanna, motion to adjourn?
No, adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.